... the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations, Project 351.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So each year, one of our eighth graders is selected as an ambassador to participate in a program that was started in 2011 by then-Governor DeValle Patrick, where eighth graders representing every city and town in Massachusetts unite to serve, develop leadership skills, and discuss issues critical to young people and their communities. So this evening, we're delighted to have with us Wayne Labby, who's an assistant principal at the Whitcomb School, who will introduce and tell us a little bit about the project that our honoree tonight, Peyton Rogers, is taking part in. Mr. Labby?
Thank you very much. Wayne Labby, Assistant Principal, First Lieutenant Charles W. Whitcomb School, commonly referred to as Marlboro Middle School. As Ms. Grulick just noted, Project 351 was started in 2011 by then-Governor Patrick DeValle, and basically, at that time, it served as sort of a day of service, an opportunity for young men and women in eighth grade throughout the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts to come together and to come to Boston for a day of sort of service, a day of leadership. But that's basically it. Since then, over the years, the past seven years, it's evolved. It's become much more of a year of service, a year of leadership, a year of community. A much more opportunity for young men and women to build their mantra of sort of unite, act, and lead, to sort of unite, to act, and to make lead in their communities. It begins each year in January with the send-off. This year was January 14th. It happened to be inclement weather, and was postponed to the 29th. Our ambassador, who I'll introduce momentarily, caught the bus to Framingham, went into Boston for some brunch, where she met all the other ambassadors from throughout Massachusetts. They engage in dialogue, topics, hot topics of the day. It's really about empowerment. It's really about offering them the opportunity, encouraging them, their passion, to really make a difference within their communities. The governor often comes by, makes a speech, congratulates them, thanks them for their service. Soon thereafter, it's lunchtime, they have lunch, and then they're off for an afternoon of community service to five or six different charitable organizations within Boston. More often than not, Marlboro goes to Cratos de Crayons. There, it's a very big facility. We do many different things: folding clothes, cleaning, toys, helping out organizing, many different functions, over three-plus hours in the afternoon. From there, we go back to Boston, to every, all the ambassadors come together, more dialogue, more empowerment, more conversations, and then back on the buses, back to Framingham for our ambassador, back home. It's about a 12-hour day. It's a long day. It's a tiring day, but it's an empowering day, and she's going to tell you more about that momentarily. So the process we do every year is, late fall, we, we being, me being the eighth grader assistant principal, reaches out to the eighth grade teams, there's three teams, and we, I give them the literature and sort of say, here's Project 351, remember, most of them have been this many times since coming down, and saying, this is sort of what it embowers, you know, leadership and integrity and courage and passion to make a difference. And we ask them to go back and meet as a team and to nominate one representative. And they forward us the three names, myself being the eighth grade EP, the school adjustment counselor for eighth grade, Sarah Edwards, and Heather Roach, our eighth grade guidance counselor. We met as a committee and interviewed the three candidates, all very strong, very passionate, very promising young men and women, and I'd like to recognize them at this time: Brianna Alange, Lucas Felipe, and Peyton Rogers. Ultimately, we nominated one ambassador who should go not only back in January, but she's also, which she's going to tell you momentarily, she's also in the process of her second new function in her community service project. And like I said, there's a bunch of them that she's going to be embodied throughout this school, throughout this calendar year. So I'm happy to introduce the City of Marlboro Marlboro Public Schools, Project 351 Ambassador, Peyton Rogers. Peyton?
So, hi, I'm Peyton Rogers. So just to let you know more about Project 351, I think Mr. Labby covered a lot of it, but it's a youth service organization that develops a generation of community-first citizen leaders. So when I went to lunch day, when I got on the bus, I was kind of nervous, you know, new people, getting used to new surrounding, but people were very welcoming there. There were some alumni members who were just really welcoming, and, you know, they knew how to encourage you and how to get you ready for that first day. So when we first got to the JFK Museum, they gave us a quick tour, but we soon, all 300, or there were a lot of people there, we all gathered in this big room, and Governor Baker came out, and he started speaking, and then Ms. Baker started speaking, and it was just really inspiring to hear their words and to see them in person. And, yeah, it was just really amazing to see them. And soon later after that, we got on a bus, and I went to the State House in Boston, and I helped make hygiene kits and backpacks and things like that for kids in Puerto Rico who did not have those supplies. And, you know, it felt really good to be doing things like that, because every time I finished something, I could just see a kid's smile on their face. So, yeah, so, like Mr. Labby said again, our motto is unite, act, lead, all with the purpose of giving through community service and leadership. And so this year, our clothing drive is our spring service project, and since this project will be ending soon, well, you'll see more about that in the video that we'll be playing, so.
Would you like me to do that now, Peyton?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Project 351 is an independent nonprofit organization that embraces our mission to foster unity, promote kindness, build hope, and support and celebrate young people. Project 351's motto is unite, act, and lead, all with the purpose of giving through community service and leadership. This year's spring service project is a clothing drive supported Cratos de Crayons in Boston. Cratos de Crayons' mission is to provide children from birth through age 12 living in homeless or low-income situations with the essential items they need to thrive at home, at school, and at life. We need your support through the donation project that uses clothing, shoes, and backpacks. Any socks, underwear, pajamas must be new, sizes children zero to 12 up to adult size medium.
Hi, I'm Peyton Rogers. This year's ambassador for Project 351 here in the homeroom. Your donations will be dropped out here at Whitcomb School, beginning in March 26 through April 3, during the hours of 8:00 a.m. through 3:30 p.m., weekdays only. Please help us by opening your hearts and your closets. Thank you.
And I believe this video played, am I right, Mr. Daniels, in all of the homerooms for the students at Whitcomb the other day? Thank you.
I also just wanted to mention that since this project is ending soon, future service projects are up and coming. So on May 12th, Governor Baker will convey ambassadors and alumni for a leadership reunion at Gillette Stadium, hosted by the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation. The reunion will feature leadership workshops, high-impact service, and an annual Peace and Unity Walk in honor, in honor of Martin Richard, with his parents, Bill and Denise Richard. Martin would be in eighth grade this year. He is an honorary ambassador for Project 351. Last thing I would like to say is just thank you to all the people who have helped me do this. Mr. Cronin, my ELA teacher, helped me make this video, my leadership team, Andrew Damaris, Erin O'Sullivan, Sarah Cronin, Mia Sargent, Courtney Sweeney, Kaitlin Lee, all these people, they just helped me make this project a success. Thank you to Ms. Roach, who helped me gather this whole project, Mr. Daniels for helping me spread the word, and for Mr. Labby, who nominated me and just helped me throughout this whole project. And I'd also like to thank you for inviting me here. It's been a great experience.
Thank you.
Any questions for the committee?
I have a question. I'm just curious, so it was more inspiring seeing the governor and the state government?
The answer is yes. The answer is yes.
I'm doing the budget, so I just wanted to...
I have a question for you. Do you think, so you're doing some public speaking now, and I think through all of this, you're probably having to talk to your peers. How has that been? Like, has, have you felt, like, through your school experiences so far, that you've had some experience, some preparation for this role?
Well, I mean, I, well, I'm in National Junior Honor Society, so I do things like that, and I stand up and speak. I was nominated president for bands, so I also speak sometimes like that. I've never taken on a role like this before. This is really big for me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for representing Marlboro.
Thank you.
MHS Student Advisory Committee.
So we, we have Allison, Alicia, and Madison this evening. So Madison will go first.
On March 14th, at 10:00 a.m., students and faculty members at Marlboro High School participated in a walk-in to Stand Against School Violence in America. This walk-in was supported all across the country and was in response to the solidarity for the 17 students and faculty members who tragically lost their lives on February 14th in Parkland, Florida. Students were asked to participate regardless of race, religion, political beliefs, and gender, and come together as one strong community and show our support for the communities across the country who have been affected by gun violence. Students and faculty linked arms together in support of safety, community, and kindness, the core values at MHS. Over 500 students across all grades and faculty members walked out of the fieldhouse together and followed one another along the bus path. Then each one linked arms and for 17 minutes of silence and solidarity. The group affected on the lives lost due to gun violence in schools. Then after 17 minutes, 17 balloons were released, each inscribed with the names of a victim who lost their lives in Parkland, Florida. The walk-in signified the support the MHS community has for those who have been affected by gun violence. We as a community came together and participated in a movement to make our school and community safer and promote the well-being of students and teachers. The walk-in promoted the discussion of violence and how we as the future can help stop this extreme violence and hate in schools. I would like to thank Mr. Cleary and the rest of the administration, who helped students organize and support the event, ensure both student and faculty safety, and aided in the logistical planning of the walk-in. Without their support and dedicated leadership that promoted the event, MHS High School's show of solidarity would not have been possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee? Any questions at Senate seat?
Actually, I just wanted to say, I'm, thank you, because I really appreciated that the student body went ahead and took a lead on coming forward to let administrative, administration know that you all wanted to do this, because that's what it's really all about, is the students being able to do what they felt they needed to. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Alicia. I'm a sophomore at Marlboro High School, and I'm a part of the student council at the high school. And every start of spring, the Marlboro Student Council goes to a big student council conference in Hyannis and Cape Cod called MASC. It's a really big, like, conference where leadership roles are taken, and at this event, different workshops are created where student councils from all across Massachusetts can come and grow to become a better student council for their school and more, better leaders for their school as well. In the workshops, the members of student councils are taught how to encourage people in their school to get active around the school and make everyone feel more comfortable with public speaking and all that different kind of stuff. Our keynote speaker from Marlboro talked about how to deal with looking out for each other around school, although it seems like all of us are very different. We all have the same matters we're going through high school together. And along with the conference, it is a good chance to bond as a student council for our school and make a lot of different friendships from different schools, like Westboro was there and Assabett. And we meet many new people from all different schools and help each other become better school leaders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
I, I'll wait till you talk, and then I'll say what my case, but it's along those lines.
Hi, I'll be talking a little bit about jazz bands. Jazz has been a great experience for me for many reasons, one being the level of it. We recently performed at the Massachusetts Association for Jazz Education and received a gold medal. Because of this, we'll be performing at Berklee College of Music, and everyone worked hard to get where we are, and even the natural talent of everyone is at such a high level. And this really intimidated me at the beginning of the year, because I'm the only freshman in jazz. But with a lot of practice, I'm doing well now, and when I say a lot of practice, I mean a lot of practice, especially after auditions, when we found out who made jazz. We got about 15 songs from Mr. Piazza, our director, and he expected us to have them mostly learned by the start of school. And this scared me, because I had never played this many songs before in any group that I've ever been in. And not only that, but on one of the first days of jazz, he made us go down the line and play some of our music, and that rehearsal, I was shaking the whole time. I was really scared. I'd never had to do that before. He's really not afraid to make us play, but it's because he really cares that we do well, and we do well. And to wrap things up, I'd just like to say that there's a lot of things I like about jazz, but I have to say that my favorite thing is the outfits we wear. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. I think Alicia's back up.
So this is to all of you, actually?
You have all nervous.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. No, it's okay.
So the other MASC is the Mass Association of School Committees.
Oh, okay.
And every year, I think I might have mentioned this last time you guys spoke, or two times ago, but every year, MASC, our MASC, has what we call a Day on the Hill, which is an opportunity for school committee members from around the country, around the state, rather, to go to the State House and to listen to legislators and then go and lobby them and meet them and talk to them. And student representatives and student council members are invited to come as well, for free, and spend the day, and meet legislators, and do that kind of interesting stuff. So I wanted to extend that to you guys, if any of you want to come. It's on April 25th, and the last time I brought it up, I think I said I would mention it to Mr. Cleary. I don't think I have done that, but I certainly will, and, because it's a little closer. So just keep that in mind, if any of you, and I know Heidi's not here tonight, but, yeah.
Yeah, I remember you talking about that last time.
Yeah, okay. So, and I'm definitely going, I don't know who else is going, but I will be there, and I'd love to have company. Oh, and the food is really good. So what happens is all of the vocational schools, Assabett and all the other ones around the state, make all the food, and it's this huge lunch, and it's really awesome. So...
It's worth it just for that.
It's worth it just for the food, yeah.
Thank you.
I would go for jazz, the food is the best part.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Superintendent 34.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I did want to say that Heidi reached out to me. She is at play practice tonight. I'm sure we'll hear more about Anything Goes before the end of the evening. Business Professionals of America State Conference, our MHS chapter of BPA, led by teacher Jane Haley, competed recently in the state conference, and they came away, as they always do, with an impressive, impressive array of awards. Individual wins, and these all qualify for nationals. Advanced Accounting, third place, Marissa Casey; fourth place, Jerry McCarthy; fifth place, Ivana Owada; Payroll Accounting, third place, Michaela Zaharis; fourth place, Jack Tobin; fifth place, Kyle Carroll; Economic Research, individual research paper, second place, Courtney Matthews; Administrative Research Project Individual, first place, Abigail Roger, Robert, and second place, Dorothy Davis; Marketing and HR Concepts, third place, Nick Patel. And this is an impressive award, Mobile Applications, top 10 contestants in the nation, Zecharia Fadi. And then some special awards, first place for Community Service for our Reality Fair, $100 to Marissa Casey; third place for Community Service for Computer Training, $50 to Abby Robert, and third place for the Creation of the PIN Design, $50 to Ivana Owada. Congratulations to all of our students who attended. I wanted to talk a little bit about our Workforce Development news. Marlboro High School has received several project requests to enlist the services of our skilled students. Given the success of the young ladies who have created the heart for code, there's been a request for app development from Boston Scientific, now remember, these are high school students, this is tremendous, as well as a request for an app to assist Mike Matros and the Heroes Cup. Additionally, there are nine students, eight seniors and one junior, who are involved in a paid internship with GE Healthcare Life Sciences, traveling by our STEM van to the site for several hours after school twice a week. Five students will work on the development of an app to support facilities maintenance. The other four will advance work on a web scripting program that was begun last summer by two college students. When I was initially approached by Tony Katarowski from GE about this possibility of one or two interns, we talked him into, he has generously approved, the hiring of these two teams. So it was a little bit more than he had anticipated in the beginning, but we believe that this will be mutually beneficial, both learning for our students and productivity for GE. More news to follow on the topic of workforce development. We have a, a meeting that is, was to have been hosted by Mayor Vijan on March 8th that was canceled due to weather. It's now rescheduled to April 9th. We'll also be joined by the Massachusetts Secretary of Labor and Workforce Development, Rosalynn Acosta, and several of our business partners, who will come together to talk about really strengthening and tightening that pipeline of our students into the industry sector where it's most needed, in concrete examples of how we can get this work done expeditiously. As Madison talked a bit earlier about our school safety concerns and the march, or the walk-in, as I like to call it, that took place on the 14th, and I'd also like to thank our school committee members who joined us, Catherine Hennessy and Michelle Boden-Hedinger. Our safety protocols are always important to us. We have updated them, it's a routine occurrence. We have our next round of safety drills in our classrooms scheduled. We work closely with School Resource Officer Lou Torio, and he is also my guest at the next District Parent Council in April, because I anticipated that there would be questions from the parents on this council around school safety. Principals have been reminded to keep their entry protocols tight. We did discuss that at one of our last meetings. Madison highlighted beautifully the Linked as One silent peaceful walkout. I need not talk anymore about that, but I did want to also say that some Hildreth students took part in a ceremony as well in the cafeteria, where they read the names of the 17 victims from Parkland, as well as the middle school, and that was quite moving. The fifth and sixth graders were in the cafeteria with Assistant Principal House, and the entire seventh and eighth grade was outside with the rest of the administrative team, where students led the reading of the names with an appropriate minute pause between each. It was absolutely freezing out there, and these students were in silent, somber mode. It was, it was really something to see. So I want to thank our administrators, but most especially our student leaders in our buildings. So attached to this report in the Information Handout section, I've broken down the past three years, we call this our School Attending Children Report. I had anticipated that this would be given to you before the budget workshop, but again, this was canceled because of the storm. So I do have more backup data, if anyone has a question as to what makes up the, the numbers in, in these various categories, but you can look for yourself in terms of the ups and the downs. I will say that in-state, private, and parochial is down 61 students across the three years, so they're, they're staying in the Marlboro Public Schools, which is a positive. Some of the others have gone up a tick, but nothing we would not have anticipated. I think that we're competitive out there, and I put on the table one more time for a thought as we enter into June, maybe the school choice, thinking about high school school choice, just something to think about in the next few months. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the committee? Assistant Superintendent Murphy.
Thank you. On Monday, March 5th, Supervisor of Visual Arts Julie Baker kicked off the celebration of National Youth Art Month with an exciting day of art at the Early Childhood Center. All preschool students were scheduled for a 30-minute art session to explore a variety of art processes at five different creation stations. Five high school students, who are members of National Art Honor Society, along with two students from the post-grad program, assisted at each of the stations. And I think at our budget hearing, we, we saw evidence of the art. The main objective of that day was to engage our young learners in a variety of processes that encourage exploration and discovery through arts materials. Art activities in early childhood help develop brain capacity and play a central role in motor skill development. Art is essential in the early years. The following week, Supervisor of Music Jonathan Rosenthal and Jharak School Music Teacher Meg DeFazio taught students new songs, poems, and rhymes that helped foster the natural wonder and joy for students. Parents were invited to join students on the final day for an art show and a musical demonstration. I want to note that this week is the Citywide Art Show, and in that art show, there will be art pieces from the ECC students this year. On March 6th, Administrative Professional Development took place. In the December, my December School Committee Report, I included an update on the actions we identified as a district in response to Opening Day Professional Development with Dr. William Daggett. These actions included student and staff surveys, as well as instructional practices assessments that took place in January 8th through the 11th. On March 6th, building principals and 6th through 12 supervisors met with Jim Miles from the International Center of Leadership and Education. Jim led the team through each report, and then each building set initial goals. Later that night, Jim provided an overview of the reports to all district administrators. Each building team then continued refining the building action plans that were begun that afternoon. These goals will be included in upcoming school improvement plans. Attached to my report, you will find the summary reports provided to the district. As a team, we examined similarities and differences between the students and teachers surveys. For example, teacher surveys. In my class, students discuss and solve open-ended questions and problems. And 89% of the teachers said that in their class, they do that. But, and we had a very positive response to that. Elementary students, 80.6%, said that in class, we discuss and solve problems that have more than one answer, so they agree, there's a similarity there. And at the high school level, a secondary level, 81.5% also said, so that was a positive. Some mixed results. Teachers said I encourage students to create original solutions to complex problems, and that response was 86.2%. And the elementary students said that the teachers underestimated that, and said that 94% of the teachers asked them to do that, but at the secondary level, only 50% said. So that is something that the secondary should look at. There's a couple of areas that Mike, I know, has spoken to the principals was about to look at, and it goes back to and connects to different discussions we've had. So one of them was, I am aware of my students' interests outside of schools, and 87.7% of our staff said, yes, they were aware. But the secondary students said only 36.1% said the teachers were aware of what their interests were, and at the elementary, only 44.6%. So that's a question we're going to have to ask ourselves, why do we think we know them, but the students don't? And then another question that we want to take steps on is, struggling and disengaged learners receive the support necessary to be successful. And only 44% of our teachers think that they receive the support, but elementary students, 91% of them think that they're receiving the support. And at the secondary level, even 69% of them do. We think it's where they, how people are defining the support. Students see their classroom teachers as that support. Classroom teachers may in fact see other staff members as giving that support. So building levels have compared their specific building results and compared that to the district results. Additionally, we spent time reviewing the Instructional Practices Assessments. During the time... During the time, Jim Miles visited 38 classrooms in the district. Each building-level team will continue to study their building-specific data. As a district, we were pleased to note that Jim observed that 32% of the lessons demonstrated quadrant C or D. He was not assigned to observe specific teachers. So just random selection, about one-third of the classrooms were instructing in quadrant C and D. So not exactly where we want to be, but showing some significant progress. It gives us some really specific goals to work on. So thank you.
Questions from the committee? Ms. Bodenhendiger.
Not really a question, but I was really fascinated to read through that document because I think, you know, I mean, one of the things that I kind of talk with these folks about is I'm not an educator. And, you know, we know that, you know, we put this kind of, these thresholds out there. Like, you know, we want the kids to reach certain levels. But I have no idea, really, how to do that, how to get them there. And reading through this, I thought it gave incredible, like really concrete ways to be able to move kids. And, you know, reading through it, I was, you know, some of it was very positive. Others, you know, clearly, we would like to see more blue and less black and, you know, more orange or whatever in the graphs. But I thought this was really helpful.
I need to say.
For me to understand it, but.
One of the things that he said repeatedly when he was here and then when he returned is that, I don't say this often, you have a really good school system. You're on the right track. I saw great instruction happening in your schools. It was a very, it was very positive feedback. And he said, "Your scores should be much higher than they are." I don't understand it. So I think that he gave us some tools that we can use, but we still will continue to improve and focus on everything.
That's great. Thanks.
Other question. Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. I want to echo your comments because I thought it was really interesting to, you know, go back and like really kind of look at the pie charts back and forth on, you know, where we were, we'd really made some strides. I definitely thought that there were some of those areas that you were pointing out, like some of the relationship stuff where you want to understand where some of that discrepancy is. Because from all of the work with the SEI, you know, you want to make sure that we're on the right track of those relationships being in the right, right place. I guess my question is, are they going to come back again then as a follow-up so that we can then see what steps, you know, we're taking? Because I loved how they gave some really concrete examples that they were seeing in the classrooms of, you know, the high rigor going on and some of the different opportunities for kids to really have more involvement. So, just curious.
So Mike is going to answer that because we've been meeting with the principals.
Okay.
So one of the reasons we wanted you to get an advanced look at this survey and the metrics they're using is because we're asking the principals to include this information, really have this be part of the basis of their school improvement plans, which are going to be coming in front of you in June. We also are asking them to define their professional development offerings, especially the first day, full day of professional development, based upon this survey information. So what we're committing to is to continue with this process with pre and post-data. So now that we have a baseline of data to work from, now we can really look at this and say, if it is relationships that we're looking at and we want to have a positive impact on that, we're going to offer defined professional development at that level. And then we're going to post-test it during the year to see if our professional development had an impact. And we think that traveling down this path of not only rigor relevance, but also using these surveys in an appropriate manner to guide us towards how are we going to improve our performance long-term? And I think that was kind of the message I've given to the principals I've met with so far about defining this specifically within the school improvement plans and then using this as the guide moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Assistant Superintendent Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to update the budget schedule, which has been wrecked by the weather, but we're back on track now. So on April 10th, obviously not tonight. We don't have the public comment session on the budget. But April 10th will be the public comment session on the budget. And then later on in the meeting, the school committee can vote to approve the budget and move it on to the next step. We have sent it out for advertisement in the local paper, so we're meeting all the statutory requirements. And we should be able to, the next day, produce the documents and send them down to the councilors and to the mayor's office. Just an update on the food service balances. The total negative balances is just about $2,200 as of the time of this report. And the same time last year, it was just about $200 less. So we're on about the same track. It's only about a 10% difference. But it has been pretty consistent throughout the year. So the change in the policy really hasn't had that big of an effect that I can see on the balances. And one thing that we're looking at is the potential for next year, kind of giving the school committee a little bit of a heads-up, but potential for next year to have free breakfast in some of the schools. We believe that we might be eligible for it. Even though we're not eligible for the full free program, there is targeted assistance when you are serving breakfast. And DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, targets schools to be able to do a free breakfast program. So if we're eligible for that, I'm going to jump on that right away next year. Reason being is we're seeing a lot of this debt has to do with breakfast as much as it has to do with lunch. So if we can provide a full free breakfast program at the elementary level, I think our numbers would decrease pretty significantly. Also, we're still working on trying to reach out to families. And anyone who has any type of financial hardship, they have to understand that they can always, if they want to just interact only with the business office, they can just interact with us. If they don't want to go through the schools, there's plenty of options that if families are in need and they need to reach out, they can always contact me directly if they'd like. Any option. We're just trying to make sure that we have a conversation about why there is a balance. With the joint ratification of the MEA contract at the last meeting, we're working on updating the budget documents. As I had told you, there's an A document and a B document. The B document is taking some time to get ready because of all the massive changes. You have to go in and update, you know, 400 to 500 records at a time. So it's a little bit of a time-consuming thing. But we're working on that to try to get ready for sending to the mayor and city council. But also to give to the school committee so you understand the changes based upon the ratification of the new agreement. That way you can look through the line on budget and see the actual changes from line to line. We think that's really important for you to be able to see that. And just so you know, even those two budgets, it's the same dollar line at the bottom. Like, there's no change in that. It's just where the dollars go from salary reserve and how they get distributed out based upon the ratification of our contractual agreements. So that's my report for tonight.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Hennessy.
Thanks. Just a request. There had been a number of slides that were presented during the budget meeting that we didn't have, so that could be sent out to us.
I sent that out today.
Oh, today? Oh, sorry. Obviously. Haven't gotten to that email. Okay. Thank you.
As along with some other questions that were asked, specific questions.
That was the next one. Good.
Substitutes, some data on substitutes, some data on how, what the criteria for the cutoff for word language in seventh and eighth, as well as... There was a third thing, Mrs. Matthews? Or was that it? All of the questions were answered, suffice it to say.
So it all went to the NPLC email. Okay. Thank you. Never mind. I use it very infrequently. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. See none.
The minutes.
They're ready?
Yeah. Did you read your packet?
Minutes of February 13th, 2018.
Motion to approve with corrections to Mrs. Hennessy's spelling.
Motion made and seconded to approve as amended. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Minutes of February 27th, 2018.
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Adam Superintendent.
Thank you. While several were able to meet the candidate for the position of Director of Finance and Operations a few weeks ago, we wanted to bring the candidate back because this is a vote on the part of this committee. So I'd like to introduce Doug Diaz. You have in your packet his resume. We are delighted. I'm sorry I won't get a chance to meet with, work with Mr. Diaz, but he's here tonight to accept any questions you have and your congratulations, hopefully.
So Diaz, congratulations. Thank you very much for joining our team, and we're going to have a great time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really thrilled to be here. Thank you for the invitation to come back to the committee, the remainder of the committee. This feels really great, and I'm thrilled. And July 1st can come soon enough.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Wait a minute!
What a thing that is, huh?
Nice. Thank you, my friends. I appreciate that.
From a business perspective.
Ah, sure.
We're offending somebody no matter what we say.
I'm not offended.
The door hits in the air.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
That was pretty bad. I can't believe it. Any questions from the committee? Now, again, welcome to Marlboro. It's a great district, and like I said, we've got a great team here and looking forward to having you join that team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for us? I know you've met some of us, but there's a couple people that you hadn't met yet.
No, but I would like to comment that the application and the interview experience has been fantastic. I can sense the passion for education in the room. It's the same thing every time I come into this building. And again, I'm thrilled to join this team. I really am. I'm looking very much forward to it. So thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve the position of Director of Finance and Operations for Doug Diaz.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? We're on.
You're in.
New scholarships.
So we are always grateful to members of the community who offer support to our students who graduate from Marlboro Public Schools. However, we do need your approval, the approval of the school committee to accept the two scholarships, which I'm sorry, I don't know why they're so small, but the Ann-Louise Wheezy Callahan Memorial ITAM Ladies Auxiliary Scholarship, an annual award of $100 to a graduating Marlboro High School senior interested in pursuing the field of medicine with the hope of helping others. I'm not sure what the opposite of that would be, but I would hope that you would help others in the field of medicine. MHS Girl Soccer Scholarship, raising money, has raised enough money to give an annual $500 award to a graduating Marlboro High School senior who has participated in the soccer program each year they were enrolled at the high school. So we ask your approval of these scholarships.
The wording was weird, but.
Can, I don't know, can you clarify what enrolled in each year? I mean, or each year enrolled? It just seems kind of...
I believe it means that you played for all years at the high school, on the girl's soccer team. That's how I read it.
I personally think that's not the right way to present a scholarship for, that you have had to have been playing all your years. That's the committee's decision to make whether or not.
It's their scholarship. That's what they choose to do. Move to, are we doing them together?
Sure.
So move to approve the two new scholarships.
Motion made and seconded to approve the two new scholarships. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? And I do want to just announce, I really encourage the high school students to apply for these scholarships. I just went to one of the local companies. They have a $2,000 scholarship for a young lady looking to go in the engineering field, and they had one application. And also the city scholarship, we give all five a year. And the number of applicants have been going down. So I encourage, take a look at these and, and college is very expensive, as you know. Thank you. Transfers, FY '18 budget.
Mr. Mayor, I have three transfers tonight for the school committee. The first is moving money from the music equipment line to the student activity music line to pay for the participation in the Allstate program, as well as pay for the supervisors lodging for the Allstate program. The expenses in the equipment line can cover it with just one transfer. The second is a request. As we continue to receive additional requests for translations and language other than Spanish and Portuguese, we do have to spend, send those to a private contractor. And we do need to transfer some money over to cover that on a yearly basis. So I'm requesting to transfer $20,000 from our salary reserve to cover some of these expenses of the translation budget that has exceeded the overall budget. That would still leave us with $85,000 in the salary reserve. And, you know, we're running out of real estate, so we're still in a really good place as far as where we are with the budget this year. Like I've mentioned, we should be able to also fully fund the capital and other things. So we're still in a very good place, and we'll spend down the rest of that salary reserve to cover some one-time expenses. The last transfer is just an increase in medical and health supplies. They went a little bit above budget. They're $2,111 above their budget. But fortunately, this year, we're going to spend less in the screening department. Our kindergarten screening is going to have a different look to it. As you already know, we're going to be doing that in the beginning of next year. So we will have some funds available this fiscal year in the screening budget that we won't fully utilize. And we can transfer that over to cover the additional medical and health supplies this year.
Any questions on the transfers? Mr. Walther.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bergeron, one question came to mind when I was just looking at the translator transfer. When we contract privately for a language other than Spanish or Portuguese, does the private contractor have to be present personally at the hearing? Or can it be done via teleconference or telephone?
Most of our expenses are for telephone or someone who's not there. But also, there's an occasion that happens where we actually have to send a document to them and have them actually translate the document and send it back to us. And we have, what we believe, we tried out three vendors last year, and we found one of them to be very responsive and also that happened to be the best cost provider. And they have a great FTP site that we just upload documents, very secure. They bring them right back to us as soon as they're done. And it creates timestamps and everything so we can hold them accountable. So. But that, it happens occasionally. And when we have to have folks, they're not necessarily present at the meetings, but what we do is we get them on speakerphone so that way they can translate for the parents at that time.
Yeah, I was just, because it would seem to me that it would be a greater cost to have a person physically present. So, but we're already utilizing teleconference and the like. Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Question on the medical supply expense line. I know we've talked about it in previous years, the amount of visits to the nurse's office, especially at the Whitcomb. Is this reflective of that as well? I mean, are these things like, you know, Band-Aids and ice packs and...
We've actually been looking at that data, trying to determine the appropriate staffing at each level. And what we have found is that the site visits to fifth and sixth grade and then conversely, seventh and eighth grade are not out of the realm of Kane and Richer School. So they're actually quite consistent. And then the high school as a total is a little bit more comparable to Jark School. So when we look at that, we think we have the FTEs in place. I could tell you, we've generally overspent medical supplies each year I've been here by a short amount. There's only $12,000 in the line item, but we've been able to pretty much cover it by $2,000 or $3,000 each year that I've been here. In the future, I think it's an area that if we can just move it up a little bit at a time, it'll probably work. We don't budget that much per student for medical supplies.
My question's not exactly on point, but something you said before. My question's not exactly on point, but something you said before made me think of it. And you probably, Jody will probably talk about it in her, about her story that she's going to give us next time. But, when you were talking about spending down, and I know sometimes we prepay at a district, do we have any that we can prepay out of that?
I believe there's two...
Or do I have to wait for two weeks to get that answer?
Four students. And was it, I think the last time we talked was about 200,000. We're looking at maybe a little bit more. Yeah, we're going to be prepaying this year, probably four students, about $200,000 in total. Generally, what, when Jody and I sit down and talk about that, the one thing that we usually agree upon is that we want to make sure that it's a student who's currently 21, who will be 22 during next fiscal year, because we never want to prepay a student's tuition and then create an operational deficit the year afterwards. So, that's something that we work on every year and try to take advantage.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve the transfers as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Policy 6.15.
Thank you very much. So, you have within your packet policy, search, seizures and interrogation policy. We started working on this, I don't know, over, yeah, a little over a year ago, and have been back and forth involving not only our attorneys, but we did have full review with our police and made sure everything aligned with the MOU. And what you have in front of you is for a first read. And if you have any specific questions, obviously, please feel free to either let me know tonight or via email so that we can try and make sure that we have things offered up. But, we've been back and forth with the attorneys to make sure we were as buttoned up as possible. So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Waldo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a chance to briefly touch base with Ms. Hennessy before the meeting on this, and I appreciate the subcommittee's work on this. And I know, as she just indicated, it's been vetted by attorneys, police chiefs, so greater minds than mine have looked at it. But I am going to perhaps play my contrarian card a little bit on this and just put it out there for the committee as a whole. And obviously, it's first read, so nothing needs to be decided tonight. My concern, my eyebrows were raised when I saw this in the packet. This is a very involved, should I say, area to be wading into, and it's quite ambitious to be drafting a policy. And it is an area that is so heavily governed already by state and federal constitutions, statutes, and case law, and in our case, also governed by a memo of understanding with the Marlboro Police Department, that I question the need for us to craft a policy in this area, notwithstanding what MAS C and our attorneys and police chiefs and others may say. And I question it on this grounds, and it's far from a theoretical question. The more levels of policy and procedure that you create, and as I mentioned, you've got constitutions, you've got statutes, you've got CMRs, the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, you've got our MOU, we're looking to essentially layer on a fifth layer of policy and procedures. And my concern is as follows. The more layers that you put on something such as student discipline, criminal investigations and criminal cases, the more risk you take that there will inadvertently or deliberately be deviations or omissions from policies and procedures. And my concern within our realm is that if there is a deviation from some policy, some procedure, some requirement, it will give ammunition to students or attorneys to argue that the school system should not impose a punishment. And if it's been a serious enough case and has landed in the court system, could give defense attorneys arguments to argue, a license to argue, that the court should not impose any discipline or sanction on an individual, on a defendant. And it's far from theoretical, because I dealt with this in the district attorney's office. Defense attorneys, they look to the constitution. If there are no constitutional violations, look to the statutes. Are there statutory violations? If there are no statutory violations, look to the Code of Regulations. If there are no Code of Regulation violations, look to the internal policies or memos of understanding. And eventually, they'll find something, an I that wasn't dotted or a T that wasn't crossed. And I lost many, a perfect example is OUI cases where there's constitutional law, statutory law, and a whole host of CMRs, the regs, governing breathalyzer tests. And I lost breathalyzer evidence, and in extreme cases, I had cases dismissed because a regulation or a police internal policy wasn't followed by a particular officer. So, it's not theoretical. It does concern me that we're wading into an area that may not need to be weighted into, given that so much of this is governed already, like I said, by provisions, case law, statutes, and our MOU. I just throw it out there. I think it's something I want other committee members to be thinking about because I'm questioning, notwithstanding the people that have viewed this and given it the okay. I do want to put out the macro question of, should we even be invoking or crafting this type of policy when, quite frankly, the rules are already made for us? Be that as it may, Ms. Hennessy, I do have some comments and questions about it that I certainly can email. Should I email the entire policy subcommittee as a group? No, I probably should not, actually. I will just email you. There's everything from, there's everything from, I think the policy references a school administrator. Is there such a position? Or do we want to say school principal? To the law of juvenile interrogation is extremely complex. I highly doubt that a school administrator is going to be deemed an interested party that can be appointed to protect a juvenile's constitutional rights. So, when we say we will make efforts to contact parents, I don't think that's going to fly. It is very involved, as I said. It is very complex. It is just an area I was surprised to hear that we were going into. And so, I am, I have both substantive as well as some Scrivener comments or questions that I will forward to you, born out of my almost 10 years in the DA's office. I think we, if we're going to do this, I think some sections need to be deeper. But again, that gets into a fifth layer of putting something in paper that can be used against us later. And when we're talking about disciplining kids for serious enough offenses, I don't want people escaping because an I wasn't dotted, a box wasn't checked, and whatnot. So, that's my concern. I put it out there for the committee to consider between now and the second reading. But I do appreciate the work, and I'll forward my comments to you via email.
Thank you.
After the chair and...
Yeah. If you can send it to me...
Send out an update, that'd be great.
And I would also suggest, if at all possible, because we do have a policy meeting later on this week, so if all possible, to send something to me so I could share it with the subcommittee that day. That'd be great.
I drafted something over the weekend and today, as I read the policy and reread it, I can hopefully get those out to you tomorrow during the day if that works.
Thank you. That'd be really helpful.
Great.
Thank you. Acceptance of donations and gifts. New England Patriots grant anti-violence training, it wouldn't come in MHS, $3,000.
Go ahead. Motion to accept with gratitude.
Motion made and seconded to accept with gratitude. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries. MADSC Sped 274 Program Improvement Grant, $16,856.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries.
Carries.
Reports of the school committee's subcommittees. Ms. Hennessy.
So, which I kind of already said, but for clarity, we did meet last week, had a policy meeting, getting a lot of things back on track. Obviously, search and seizure was one of those things. We have a number of things coming up. We have a meeting on Thursday at 10:00 AM with a very full list on there because we're also trying to then start updating really the whole policy book to a minimum, then start moving over to the new logo, which isn't really that new anymore, but the newer logo. So, we will be starting to get some of that in front of you shortly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more subcommittee updates? Seeing none. Members forum. Ms. Hennessy.
All right. So, kudos to the superintendent and the administrative staff for supporting the students again. I appreciate that because I think some of the conversations we've had, not necessarily all superintendents in, you know, state or even across the nation, were necessarily in support of their students having that opportunity. So, I do appreciate you providing that opportunity for them. And then, as was mentioned earlier, Anything Goes, the High School Musical, which will be at Wickham, is next weekend. So, Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday, there will be a matinee. And it's going to be good. The lobby is going to look spectacular, I've heard, maybe from personal resources.
That's the sixth, seventh, eighth.
Sixth, seventh, and eighth. Yep. So, please, please come and support, get the word out. And I'm sure you're going to be announcing Michael words.
Next time.
Next time.
Stay tuned.
But, boy, did they do good again.
Excellent.
So, thanks.
Thank you for reminding.
Any other members? Ms. Matthews.
I reviewed the warrant with Mr. Bergeron and have signed it.
Thank you very much. Any other members? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries. Thank you.